Okay, it's six o'clock. We're gonna call the meeting to order and before I hand it over to the select board, I'd like to say good luck to the Lady Cats tonight down at the Berry Auditorium for their semifinal game against...
White River.
...her Valley. So, good luck.
Wildcats will win tonight.
Hopefully.
Because they're both Wildcats.
Oh, they are? So, I need to, um, I need to take a nomination for the chair.
I nominate Eric Remick.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second. But/or I said that nominations didn't require seconds.
Yeah, that's/or I's business.
Okay, just saying. It was a surprise to me.
Um, so, we'll vote all in favor of having Eric Remick be chair for the ensuing year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
No advantage.
All right.
Till I yell, "He's chair," at least till I yell, "Byron is yell."
So, you have the floor now, Mr. Remick.
All right. So, um, so we also need vice chair. Any nominations?
Yes, Kaylee.
You're nominating Kaylee. Okay.
It requires a second.
It does not. I don't think it does. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of having Kaylee serve as vice chair for the ensuing year, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, next is approval of minutes from, uh...
Gotta do God.
So, you have Tim?
Welcome, Tim.
Thank you.
Let's people know who he is. You got his name tied up.
Just as a historyist, it's not WIZ anymore.
That's true.
That's true. Yes, I'm not WIZ.
How are you on history? Because that's a big chair to fill in the history area.
I probably can't live up to it. I'll do my best.
All right.
We saw fun facts.
Yeah. Something about the Roman Empire, I guess.
That's a while ago. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right.
We'll see how much you can screw up Hardwick in a year.
Yeah.
I'll keep a close eye on you, Mr. Cadello.
All right.
Sure about that?
Yeah, okay. First thing, we need to approve some minutes from our last regular meeting and we had the special town meeting informational meeting. So, that was the fifteenth was a regular meeting.
Well, I remember that we approved both.
Second?
Second. Okay. Any discussion or changes on those minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining because they weren't here? Got one. Okay. Motion carries. They're both approved. Next, set, adjust agenda.
I've gotta add for this select board to approve the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District hazardous and household and hazardous waste collection event we held on July 27th. Just authorize me to sign the letter of engagement or whatever the ten or whatever it is, permission.
It's the, oh, hazardous waste.
The one that they do at the grand garage?
Yep.
Got it. We'll do that as a number eight?
A what?
Number eight.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any things to come off this agenda?
Nope.
Nice try.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Are we good? All in favor, roll them with additional number eight. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I know it's an awful lot for an organizational meeting. Next, communication from the audience. Welcome. And next is item one, town appointments. So... Ooh, we have a bunch of these that we do every year and I believe we've listed in our agenda, I think we have listed the person currently serving where we have somebody. Is that correct?
Except that Danny was actually the town rep for NVDA, but...
He never goes.
He didn't go and I had trouble going, but I at least made it to one or two. So, I guess I'm okay with that.
It is. Yeah.
Yeah, we need representation.
Thank you, Sheri.
I'll, I'll try. Or if I can make it, I'll ask one of you to go.
Because now, I definitely can't do it now because I'm no longer the ambassador guy. So, I don't have the opportunity.
Yeah, you don't have that time.
She's gotta work.
Maybe try to just fill in some of the blanks and see if there's any that needs to be changed before.
Is Paul not editing communication?
He is, yes. I didn't, I...
So, we can write him in?
Oh, boy, don't we change that one.
So, we put Paul Fixx as NVK Communication Union District Representative. We're gonna put Paul Fixx in there.
Okay.
We need a CBSWMD alternate and we need an agent to convey real estate, which used to be WIZ.
Does it have to be a select board member or could WIZ still do that?
I can do that one though. That's an easy one.
You wanna do that one?
Yeah.
Do you have to show up at tax sales?
Yes, you have to show up at all the tax sales.
Right, but I ain't that many.
Two a year, potentially.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, okay.
Sheri, what's the alternate that...
Can you still bid on them?
That's my kind of...
Sheri, is the alternate just when you can't make the CBSWMD?
Basically, yes.
I can do that as long as you tell me if you can't.
The, their board meetings are the first Wednesday of the month.
What time usually?
At 6:30.
Okay, so we're gonna do hers and alternate Danny will be the new agent to convey real estate. Paul Fixx is the NVK, I think, unless there's any other changes, that was all the blanks.
Unless, Tim, I don't wanna rob you of any opportunity for a town appointment.
Right.
Uh, that's all right. I'm just kinda listening and learning to start. I don't know if I wanna sign up or anything.
So, can I make a motion that we approve the town appointments as listed, in case he has them listed?
You can.
With the additions?
With the additions, yes.
Can we have a second? And then I'll read them.
Second.
Excellent. So, I'm just gonna read through for the folks watching or following along. So, here are town appointments. David Upson Jr. as our civil defense emergency management coordinator, Bill Chidsey as the town energy coordinator, Sheri Cornish as Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District rep, Kaylee Galloway Kane as the CBSWMD alternate rep, Larry Hamel is the town service officer, Danny Hale is agent to convey real estate, Sheri Cornish as board rep to sign warrants, Sheri Cornish as NECCART's board rep, Paul Fixx is NVK Communication Union District rep, Eric Remick is Hardwick Trails Committee rep, Eric Remick is Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail Committee rep. Is that even still...
No idea.
Yeah. I'm not sure that that still happens.
Yes, it does. You mean the local one or the, or the regional one?
The state one.
Oh, yeah, I think it does.
Okay. All right. I'll find out.
Tracy knows.
David Upson as town safety officer, Maya McCoy as town website coordinator, Sheri Cornish as town rep for NVDA, Danny Hale as the Hardwick Woodbury Rail Trail. Excellent. Eric Remick as the town health officer. And David Upson Jr. is deputy health officer.
Do you want to do the NVDA one?
Uh, I don't even know what the NVDA is. So, that would be...
Northeast Vermont Development Corporation.
Association.
Association. And it's, so every region...
It's a regional planning commission.
Okay. For a regional development corporation, really, right?
It's both.
Yeah.
NVDA is our Northern Vermont Development Association.
Yeah.
Technically, they're called, they're an RPC, Regional Planning Commission.
Right. Right. They're an RPC.
How about I just tell you when the stuff's happening, you can go if you like and find out what it's all about?
That would be great.
We'll do that.
So, they're, they're important.
They'll try to be the ticket next year.
Yeah, I'm, if I'm here. But yes, I think I would be.
Clearly doesn't know how this works. You were in. You didn't hear the door shut behind you when you came in here today?
All right. So, that's the slate.
Fine, fine, folks.
Yeah, all good. So, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of approving those as a slate, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's our appointments for now. Um, next is item two, select board to establish our calendar. So, traditionally, well, in the past...
This is when I fight for the meeting to start a little bit later.
A little later. So, and then these guys say no. So...
If I've already given in to the town...
For selfish reasons, I live 25 to 30 minutes away depending on the weather. So, like...
It's fine.
Yeah, that's why I don't wanna go out later.
Hey, but town meeting, I already started telling people. Told somebody to that. Town meeting, townhouse.
Thank you very much.
There's a win.
It'll be there.
You got a huge, you got a huge...
So, traditionally, we meet first and third, or historically, we meet first and third Thursday of each month at 6:00 PM here, except for the first Thursday in July, which we take as vacation. Oh, it's the, is the fourth?
This year, the first is July 4th. So, we wouldn't meet anyway, but yeah.
So, that's what we normally do.
One in July and just this year.
Works for me because of now.
6:00 PM.
Okay. So, we'll just do it. Carry on. So, could we have a motion to make that our calendar?
Second.
Wait, you moved it? You seconded it?
Motion to keep the same calendar as previous year.
Got it. Yep. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item three, select board to consider cannabis license renewal for, renewal from the Clean Cannabis Company.
So moved.
I've been told that there's no, there hasn't been any issues.
No issue. Can we have a second?
I worked around that building down there. It's so sad to say.
Um, and, yeah. And further, there's not a lot. We don't have a lot of leeway there anywhere.
We can't, no, we have no criteria.
There's several towns that...
So, we, we have, there are criteria under which we could deny some of the laws for cannabis, but it basically boils down to if they're in violation of our zoning ordinances.
They could be in violation of state law too.
Yeah, but then...
Like the liquor and tobacco licenses.
Right, but then...
But we have no criteria.
But then that wouldn't even come to us, would it?
We would find out about it.
Yeah, but how would we know that?
We wouldn't get the renewal, would we, if the...
Oh, you're saying if the state charged that?
If they violated any town ordinances too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we would definitely get the...
Oh, we would get a renewal even if they...
So, if they violated a state regulation or state...
We probably wouldn't get it.
Probably wouldn't come to us. So, basically, by the time it comes to us, generally, it's been vetted and we don't have a whole lot to say of the matter, but it's worth having the discussion and that's why it's good to have people say we don't have any issues.
Good enough.
There was also several, several towns that took the, this up on their town meeting ballot again.
Took what exactly?
No, to allow cannabis establishments, yeah.
For the positive, negative, you don't know just the question.
I don't know the outcomes, but it was a handful of towns.
Yeah.
I'm sure there was some of that.
So, I think we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
The only discussion is that typically, when we get the same renewals for alcohol and cigarettes, we see, we see that in the package.
The application, yeah.
Application in the package. I'm just saying for, did I miss it?
It's in, it was in the folder, yes. And all it really is is an email from the state saying the license number, the company, and you're up for renewal. That's really all it is. And then we usually just check with Kristen and she'll let us know that there hasn't been any complaints or violations and that's about it.
Yep. So, um, all in favor of approving the cannabis license for Clean Cannabis Company, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, item four, select board to approve and sign the annual certification of compliance for town road and bridge standards. And this is required for our state highway aid. And this is something we do every year. And we're basically, where is it?
It's in there, last page of the packet.
Last page. So, we're basically certifying that we're gonna, when we work on roads, we're gonna do it to the state standard and then they contribute, uh, state, what do you call it, ransom aid?
Yeah, grant. No, that's, that's a different thing. It's just our highway state aid. We get so much per mile, per type, class type, yes.
I can motion to approve the certification of compliance for the town road and bridge standards and network inventory for 2024.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have one of those to sign?
Yes. And Eric, I need you to sign the appointment for CBSWMD.
Do I sign both of these? The solid waste district thing?
You have to read the bottom. I'm not sure off the top of my head. Sorry.
Where are we? Item five, select board to consider request from Greensboro Nursing Home to have a coin drop in October 2024, which is currently open.
And I'm sup, we were supposed to have people here for that. There was two...
So moved.
Yeah. Motion from Danny.
It was an open month and they asked, they're gonna submit for next year, but they asked if they could have it.
We have a second. Hold on.
Second.
Okay. So, I don't know if you know, Tim, but we have every month of the summer-ish.
May, May to October.
Summer-ish, yeah. We allow people to do, one organization per month can do a coin drop one day down by the fire department. And that's all, like, we, yeah. So, that one was...
It's raffled, but it does have all filled.
I'm thinking about doing an individual coin, coin drop on the eclipse day.
Oh, on the eclipse day. But no one will be able to see you.
Yeah. There's gonna be a lot of traffic coming into town.
Well, we could do one for the parks.
So, can we do one for the police department?
We could. All in favor of approving the Greensboro Nursing Home request for the coin drop in October, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, select board to consider a request to change Graham Drive to Blackberry Lane. And this is private.
Yes, it's private. It basically just goes into some hayfields. There's no houses on it. They're just kind of, I think, regretting the original name and prefer Blackberry Lane. So, they've just asked to change it.
I think there's some history behind it, actually.
So, they just asked to change it. We've confirmed with the state that it's available and so it's just, we would just report if you approve it.
Second.
Questions?
Have Kaylee put her info on that. She...
Kaylee, put your info on this sheet.
Oh, for...
I can fill it in. It's fine. You don't need to. I'll, I'll fill it in.
What?
Yeah, but what about... What time is it?
So, wait. I'm all confuzzled. Hang on, hang on, hang on. Did we call a vote on the...
Danny moved it. I seconded the change to Blackberry Lane.
And so, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That's everybody. So, motion carries.
We'll have to skip number seven because she's not here yet.
We're moving too fast.
Yeah.
We are moving pretty fast, yeah.
That's good. We need to be moving fast. Next, eight.
Take a recess, brief recess. Get another...
I'll be at my house.
Yeah, me too. Eight.
Tell people to be here at 6:00 o'clock. Well, I said that.
So, item eight, the, um, we need, we would like to authorize the town manager to sign the, uh, the approval for the hazardous waste collection day from the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District. Do we have a motion to have the town manager sign?
Please show me.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We can have select board reports?
Okay. Well, just a quick question.
You have a question?
It's really a greenup day question. Is the rec, is it still organizing that? Will be the...
Sounds like new business kind of thing.
New business, okay.
Or old business. Go ahead. Good. Connected to what?
The hazardous waste. It just reminded me of that.
Greenup Day, yeah. There's a lot hazardous waste at Greenup Day. Yeah.
But it's different, yeah.
It is different, but it is had...
We've got a waste for that.
Uh, Greenup Day is usually a rec committee.
What is this under? What are we doing this?
Uh, new business. Sorry, we're doing select board reports, new business, old business.
Did we have any select board reports?
The...
Kaylee just was jumping into...
I was just jumping into new business.
The townhouse is open. Our first event is on the 15th, that night next week. Um, it's Rebecca, the Cicero, the psychic. Yeah, March 15th. So, it's officially open as of today. You guys told me.
Nice. Uh, any other select board reports? Oh, I can report on the yellow barn.
Oh, yeah.
If anybody wants an update. As Danny has noted, it's not fully yellow again yet because parts of it are...
So, are they gonna leave those clapboards on, the old clapboards on the top half?
Yep. So, the contract will...
I asked the same question.
My God, people.
So, the historic...
That is ridiculous.
So, the historic people wanted to leave as much...
That is gonna look so terrible.
Well, they're gonna repay me.
I know, but you're gonna, they're not, to a guy like me...
You're gonna see it every time.
Every single day.
To spend on that kind of money and not to replace 10 feet of clapboards.
No, I know.
That is just so silly, people.
I know. So, but it, but it will be yellow.
Can't sleep? I ain't gonna be able to sleep tonight.
No. So, uh...
I haven't been able to sleep.
Good news is you won't be able to see it because the building is...
The windows went in.
I'm gonna go down tonight and tear them off. If I put new ones on that one.
I would. The windows went in. The porch in the back is really nice. If anybody's seen that.
It's gonna be a beautiful building except for those old clapboards.
I'm trying to steer you away from that, Danny.
Focus on the positive.
Exactly.
We have to do it in the standards of the historic presentation.
Yep, exactly. And, uh, Dave Stratton did the, did the posts and beams for the porch for us, which was nice. And what else? That big building in the back has, it's gonna, the windows aren't gonna go into that until, I wanna say it's like two months. The lead time is really long on the windows.
What are they doing with all the cutouts of that insulation?
That's where the windows go.
Right, but are they just throwing that insulation away?
I'm good.
Um, we don't, uh, if, are you looking for those cutouts?
I mean, I might know some people.
All right. Yes. I mean, I don't know.
I'm just curious. I've had that thought.
What are we gonna do with a mound of topsick waste leaching into the Lemoyle River?
So, it's not leaching the Lemoyle River because it's been, because it's been tied up in plastic.
Being slowly taken to because it's being used, got its cover.
It's going to Coventry.
Soon. It'll be at the time.
Same place. When are they gonna ramp that up and get going again? Soon. The trucking? Danny said he, he wanted it to warm up. He thinks it's frozen. I don't know. I don't think it's probably very frozen.
I dug yesterday. I drove out and left you walking and realized, probably should have offered him a ride.
Yeah, that was nice of you.
If I buy your driveway, I'm like, I wonder if he's walking all the way up.
It was. Um, yeah. So...
Soon.
What else do I wanna say? Cavit still should be in July 1st. The Cavit store should be opening around then. Um, Center Frag and Jasper Hill Farm and the new building, it's gonna be longer because they're not gonna really be able to start their fit up until closer to June, July. So, they're gonna probably be till, uh, November, December getting in there.
That's not pretty quick.
Yes, this year.
So, is there gonna still be a trailhead there?
Yeah, I think that that parking area down there needs to be expanded a little and formal, like, not formalized, but like a little more gravel and then, um, yeah, still...
Sort of like our other trailheads that need a little gravel.
Needs a little gravel. Needs a little, anyway, yes. I don't see why not.
I just wish.
Yeah. Needs to be a combined parking, trailhead-y type of deal. Yeah. And we need to have another...
Should be portage to the line too. Should be better.
It should. And we, and we need another combined trailhead, um, parking thing where the big pile of sand for the sewer plant is, when that pile goes.
We'll get there.
I know. I know, but all in good time.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's my update.
Can we, who would we talk to? Because the property is leased.
Yes.
And when construction is done and the contracts are all finished, I want to start thinking about what we're gonna put on that west side of the building coming into the town.
Yes.
I've had a lot of people say we need to put something on that.
Totally agree.
So...
I think everybody in the, on the project side is on board with that. We just didn't have budget for it.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, we, I think Sheri mentioned something about a big grant, but, or a arts grant.
Arts and infrastructure, maybe, yeah.
They funded the mural, uh, great, great scale.
But I think that's something we should definitely...
I agree.
Yeah.
I'll check and see what the date is, what the deadline is for that.
Cool.
Yeah. That's, yeah, that's it. That would be a really good thing, I think. There will be some trees planted too. So, that'll help a little bit too.
Yeah.
You're gonna have big tall trees.
We'll help in 20 years.
Fast growing.
Okay, okay.
Talk to the tree warden about that, the fast growing.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
I mean, it's not gonna be, it's, it's not gonna be hard when they get to the person that'll win quite a bit.
It's not.
It'll look better.
Get the landscape around it.
It'll be cool to have enough, a piece of art.
It would be great to have something.
I'm thinking like a couple snowmobiles.
Oh, jumping?
Yeah, like...
Yeah.
I thought the...
Gateway to the Kingdom, right?
That would be really good.
Have a mother, machines.
Okay. So, so that was select board reports and, but you want to ask about...
Well, I, we don't need to ask about that. We've got time for that. But I do have one thing for the next agenda. Sheri emailed out, um, last week. I think it'd be great to talk about construction in Hardwick at our next meeting and how we're gonna navigate all the different main street, especially with the pedestrian bridge. So, maybe we can just put that on a agenda for next time. And like what's worth, what's worth marking? How are we gonna mark? Because we're gonna, Tom's gonna be thinking about marking those streets soon, like painting the spots. So, for the future.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Because the bridge construction is potentially starting in July.
Potentially.
Hopefully soon.
Well, it's a...
Only potentially.
We're not permitting now.
What about getting, not to add to our list?
And that has to be out to bid for 30 days.
Right.
But the permit, the...
Timing works out to definitely July.
Looks like the permit's gonna be granted.
We're on the, yeah, in the final stretch.
How was crosswalk on South Main Street right down by Jenny Lane down there? Has that ever been looked at? A crosswalk down on, by Jenny Lane down there somewhere? Has it ever been officially looked at?
We're, I got, I've gotten a couple calls about it.
It's just a, but there's a lot of people cross there.
Kids walk into school and Kristen has looked at it. The line of sight...
Oh, no, it's a problem. You can't, you can't have it go into that other road. You can't have a crossing into the end of the road.
What is the problem?
I mean, it's, so this is what I, just so, this is what I noticed. I know we have a problem. Can't have a sidewalk on that side, on the right-hand side of the road because people park there in front of themselves. And then I see that the new apartment house there, they now put parking there. Pickup was hanging out. Foot was hanging out in the road the other day.
So, I'm addressing that, the South Main Street apartment, the one down by Spring Street, but there's also the new one by Far Street.
Yes.
That was not, a curb cut wasn't granted for that.
That one is definitely not big enough.
Right. Yeah.
I don't wanna complain, but it's clearly hanging out in the road.
I'm complaining.
Yeah. So, I don't know on our list of endless, the list of things to do, but that whole sidewalk down South Main Street at some point is never going to be, it's gonna be a long term. That's gonna be a big project when we ever have to fix that because it's not, it's really not if it's accessible.
It's not the only one.
No, but we forget about these things that we have on our list.
It's definitely on a...
There's no, there's no crosswalk though, anywhere down through there. That's...
Kristen and I looked at it and I know the planning commission has looked at it.
So, there's a crosswalk at the United Church, right?
Yeah, that's a long ways from Jenny Street.
Not if you had a sidewalk down that side of the street.
No, if you had a sidewalk down that side of the street, but you don't have.
I don't think we have that this year. I think it was just the...
I mean, that's kind of the problem. That's what I was saying. We, for me, it's, the logical thing to do is to make our good sidewalk on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Because that's flat and it's doable. You know, the bank and left-hand side and all that's gonna be difficult. You're gonna, it's elevation issues. There's all kinds of issues where the right-hand side of the street, you could, you could put a sidewalk down the right-hand side.
Yeah, I think long-term.
So, I think that's, that... So I think that's, that needs some planning, is my point. It's not like I expect it to change. But I, as much as I piss him off about the planning, that's...
Let's just do it.
Sherry, you're smiling at me.
They highlighted it.
I, I made Sherry happy, and I agreed to fall fixed in the same week.
What is happening?
Boy, I'm like, darn.
Take a chug of that maple syrup.
This is good. So we have, we should, I agree, like that. I, you know, there are lots of places in town we have that we don't have the sidewalks that we need, but I think it's important to focus on the routes to school.
Yeah.
Um, as a priority. So, uh, yeah, we should, we should definitely see if...
Oh, yeah, tomorrow, it was foggy. You know, it's been foggy lately. Dark, foggy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should have safety to, for kids to walk to school. All right. Anything else in the select board reports, new business, old business world? So, we're gonna...
Are you guys here from the nursing home? Okay. We were ahead of schedule and granted your permission.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome to stay.
Maybe just push it off real quick and then...
Okay. Well, we appreciate that very much. We were prepared to let you know that fifty-five residents from Hardwick have lived in the nursing home in the last ten years, and we really appreciate the part, the community partnership we have to be able to keep this facility, you know, going. And it's a very high-quality facility with a very homelike atmosphere, which is really great to have in our community, 'cause there's a huge lack of skilled nursing care in the state. Thank you so much.
Could you give us your name?
Oh, I'm Sarah Lammerds.
Hi.
And I'm Liz Bound, and we are the fundraising committee. We are.
Thank you.
So, next town meeting, have someone there.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know. Well, we, we, we felt it was important to be in our town meeting, but yes, we'll have someone there.
Maybe you'll find someone.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody spoke.
Sarah, Sarah.
Right, but she's a doctor.
Yeah.
She lives in town.
I didn't see what they said.
I know, but I'm just saying.
It's perfectly good, yeah.
She spoke, but I think she spoke more as, 'cause she felt somebody needed to, and it had to been somebody there that said there that five residents, that they did a lot of little speech, a little jingle.
Yeah.
That's what people are asking for, for appropriations.
Yeah, totally.
And I mean, Sarah, Sarah did a fine job, but I, I certainly felt it was more like, all of a sudden, she realized somebody needed to speak.
That is what happened.
Yeah, ain't no doubt about it. She did not have a prepared speech.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We'll see you in October.
Yeah, thanks for working on the nursing home.
Yes.
Any one of us may need it at the end of the week, so keep it going.
I hope to make it there someday.
Right, that's a goal. Once you hit sixty, that's the goal. Get to the hall.
All right. Uh, all right, so, uh, we've gone through it. Uh, should we backtrack to item seven now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, are you Karen?
I am Karen.
Hi. Um, so, item seven, a select board to consider an economic development loan request from Viddle's Caif, Keith?
It's a slang's cafe.
Cafe.
Well, yes. I don't expect you to use the word cafe. I expect you to use the word viddles.
Okay.
You're not even getting some viddles. Does anybody want any viddles? So that's my, my, my process.
So, um, if I understand correctly, you're looking for a loan for, um, the, for Connie's Kitchen essentially? But it's...
That's space.
That's space.
That's space.
Yeah, got it. Um, and we have, so we have this open discussion here on our agenda. We also have, um, an executive session to get into anything that's like your personal financial data or anything like that. Um, but just, uh, sort of open it up. Does anybody on the board have questions about the application or the...
Should we, I can see where you're at.
Yeah. Read, read.
I remember that I saw what your proposed hours were gonna be, but I've forgotten where it is. Can you just tell us? When, when were you gonna be open?
So I'm going to be open Monday through Saturday. So Monday through Friday, it's going to be eleven to six. Saturday, it's gonna be nine to one.
Great.
Um, and may increase, I may do a ten to six, depending on how busy, but...
Yeah, the flow.
That looks like, but the hours will definitely increase dramatically.
Yeah. Great.
And maybe more for folks viewing than for us, 'cause we've read this. Do you want to say a little bit about how, you say in your application, how you're gonna share the space with, kind of how this is going to go?
Yep. Um, so Carol and Steve and I, Connie's Kitchen, have, um, been family friends for a very long time. Um, I currently work at Connie's Kitchen. Um, Carol has expanded her wholesaling. She has ten stores, um, and is, um, very, very busy with her bakery part. They closed the su- the sandwiches almost two years ago, um, because she was focusing on her bakery part. Um, so, daily, I'm in there, people are looking for more, she offers a, a daily special. They're looking for more than a daily special. Um, so that, that got me thinking that, um, that we need something more on that corner. It was already a successful sandwich shop in the past for a long time. So, we work very well together. So she is going to, um, move her space in the back, which she already uses all the time, and I'm just going to take the front over. Um, so some of the money that I'm requesting, the equipment is very old. It wasn't very well maintained. Um, I believe it needs some light renovations. My, um, thought processes, I'm looking for, um, where people can help themselves a little bit more. So with the crock pots, or with the cooler, where they can grab their sandwiches, or their, um, their macaroni salad or potato salad. Um, but then I'll be doing my fresh sandwiches. Um, I really want it to be timely. I think some of, um, the concerns in the area is that things aren't very timely. People are waiting for a long period of time for a quick sandwich or soup. Um, so my, my focus is really about being timely. So the more I can offer self-serve or a cooler for people to grab, you know, their, their lunch.
Their viddles.
No, no, their viddles, exactly, their viddles.
Yeah.
Um, I will still wholesale Carol's a hundred percent. Um, and she's actually kind of excited, because she'll be able to start expanding, maybe doing fresh breads and pies and some things that she has not been able to do. So we'll be able to even add even more bakery goods, um, to both menus.
So are you, are you taking over the existing seating area?
Yeah, I was gonna ask. So there'll be some eat-in space?
Yep, there's currently twelve chairs, um, so I think there's, there's five tables, um, even though there's smaller tables, but, um, we'll definitely continue with, we'll, and we'll take that one.
Okay.
And then a couple of things just to note, too. You mentioned that that would need a separate restaurant license, 'cause it's a different type of serving. So it's basically sharing the space and still having two separate businesses.
Yep, and I've actually spoke with the apartment. Uh, they came in for an inspection, um, and he didn't seem to, um, have any concerns or issues. He would actually have to inspect the entire space, but it would be, you know, my inspection and Carol's inspection. So together, we have to make sure the space is clean, ready for inspection. But, um, and we would both probably be, if there was, you know, a concern, um, we'd probably both probably be shock marked for that, but, um, we're both fairly, very clean people.
Any other questions? Um, can I have a motion to move to executive session to include the town manager, the business manager, and Karen Whitcomb um, into a, to discuss the finances?
So moved. Do we stay here?
Uh, oh, I should've said her B S A three thirteen. So moved.
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second. Oh, Tim got it.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, go down.